Happy New Year to all of those who we haven't seen.
Roberto.
Happy New Year.
Okay, so we will take up the final items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll let her know.
That carries. We will now address the action items on the policy calendar. Policy item 1B1 is a resolution to establish seamless transfer credit within the same academic major. I'll now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel to provide further background on this item. Wendy?
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. A large number of students within CUNY transfer among its undergraduate colleges, making it essential that the university facilitate smooth and efficient transfer within the system and thereby establish timely degree progression. We ask the Board of Trustees to authorize the Chancellor and his designees to make recommendations to the Board of Trustees on changes to policies and procedures and degree alignment at the university to enable seamless transfer within the majors across the colleges.
Okay, thank you. So I move the approval of action item 1B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
I just want to inform the board that the students initially had some concerns about this item, but after having a meeting with EVC Hensel, which I very much appreciate her for scheduling, those concerns have been met.
Alleviated?
Addressed.
Yes, addressed. Thank you, Chancellor. And we are fully in support of approval of this policy.
Great, wonderful to hear. No other discussion? Can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item passes.
You're on a tight deadline on this one. Got to get it done.
Yes. Policy item 1B2 is a resolution to amend the Hunter College Charter of Governance. I now again call on Executive Vice Chancellor Hensel.
The proposed amendments to Hunter College Charter have been approved by the college's governance body, the College Senate, and they are recommended by the college president. The amendment to Article 4, Section 3 replaces one seat for a faculty alternate with two seats for faculty alternates. The amendment to Article 8, Section 16 abolishes the evening council. And finally, the amendments to Article 5 in both Section 1 and Section 3 change the composition of the Senate Administrative Committee.
Okay. So I will move the approval of policy item 1B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Henry, any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item passes. Policy item 1B3 is a resolution to establish a program in fashion and design leading to the Bachelor of Arts degree at Queens College. Again, I'll call on Provost Hensel.
The proposed program will serve the university's mission to prepare its diverse population of students for the future of work in fashion, allowing them to develop the necessary skills for academic and professional advancement in this diverse field, which currently has significant career opportunities in both traditional fashion design as well as costume construction for film and television while ensuring equity and access to this vital professional field. Should there be any questions, my esteemed colleagues from Queens College, President Frank Wu and Provost Patricia Price are here and would be happy to answer any questions.
Would the Queens College representatives like to come up and say anything about the program?
May I introduce our new provost, Patricia Price, who joined us just six months ago from Baruch College. She'll speak about the details. We have a market study that actually shows there are just great opportunities here since we're in New York City. So I'll turn it over to our provost, Patricia Price.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Do we have specific questions, or is this just a general presentation of the program?
Well, we can see if there's any questions first. Does anyone have any specific questions?
I do.
Yes, Henry.
I noticed that you're creating nine new courses. Are current faculty going to teach those courses? Are you bringing in adjuncts or new faculty? What's the plan for those nine courses?
This is a current -- well, this is a new sort of iteration of a program that exists in our College of Math and Natural Sciences in the Department of Family and Nutritional and Exercise Science. That's where this program has existed before. We're moving it into our new school of the arts, and this is seeded by an existing faculty member and her students. We don't have any plans to ramp up the faculty in this area. We think we can do it with the existing faculty in drama, theater, and dance, and this person from Math and Natural Sciences and her students.
Any other questions? Would you like to say anything more about the program?
Excuse me, I didn't quite hear you.
Sorry. Would you like to say anything more about the program? It sounds like a wonderful opportunity for students.
This is a really impressive opportunity. It taps our existing niche in the arts and particularly the performing arts. We've got a really solid faculty base and interest and very robust student interest. We have existing articulation agreements with Kingsborough, and we're going to expand that to Queensborough Community College and LaGuardia. And then we've got a pipeline into the Fashion Institute of Technology at the master's level. So I think this is going to be net very attractive to our students and very supportive. New York City is the number one employer in the fashion industry, so this is a great place to be doing this.
And it seems like it's now in the right department.
Yes.
It's lived in this place before. All right, so thank you very much. So now take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The item passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So policy item 1B4A and 4B are resolutions to award -- to appoint two professors with immediate tenure with an application of Bylaw 6.2B as follows. Omrana Pasha Razak as Medical Professor Clinical at the City College of New York and Colette Brown as Associate Professor at Lehman College. I'll now call on EVC Wendy Hensel to provide further background.
Thanks. The City College is requesting immediate tenure, as you said, for Omrana Pasha Razak as Medical Professor Clinical in the Department of Community Health and Social Medicine, and Lehman College is requesting immediate tenure for Colette Brown as Associate Professor in the Department of Health Equity Administration and Technology, both with the application of Bylaw 6.2B. Should there be any questions about either of these actions, my esteemed colleagues, City College Provost Tony List and -- List, sorry, and Lehman College Provost Peter Nuasso are here and would be happy to answer your concerns.
So I move the approval of policy item 1B4A and 4B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussions or questions for the provosts? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item passes. Thank you. Policy item 1B5A through Q are resolutions to award early tenure with an application of Bylaw 6.2C2 to the following individuals. Do I need to read all this if she's?
The names? I do for the record.
Okay, for the record.
She doesn't have to.
Then you don't have to. If I'm saying the names, you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay. Rubia Valente at Baruch College, Andrew Obus, Baruch College, Alessandra Carriero, the City College of New York, Wei Wang, the Graduate Center, Andrew Kyle Gorman, the Graduate Center, Keith Chan, Hunter College, Yakov Klotz, Hunter College, Laura Wolf Powers, Hunter College, Natasha Nurse Clark, Lehman, Sean Stein Smith, Lehman College, Chloe Bass, Queens College, Natanya Duncan, Bree Allen Hopper, Hillary Miller, Mohamed Ali Miri, Jay Shuttleworth, and Hongui Zhu, all of Queens College. Now I'll call on Wendy for any further information.
Thank you for giving all of those names. I appreciate that. Granting early tenure at CUNY is a way to reward and retain members of the faculty and professional and professorial titles whose productivity in research, teaching, and service is exceptional. The possibility of early tenure is also used by the colleges and schools to entice mid-career faculty members who come to CUNY with some years in the tenure track positions elsewhere. It is -- it's an incentive. Early tenure is considered for a very small percentage of the CUNY professoriate. The campus-based process for early tenure resembles that for tenure on the regular timeline. Depending upon the structure of the institution, various levels of voting approval are required and recommendations are forwarded to the provost and president before a packet of material is sent to my office of Academic Affairs. If I concur with the campus decision, the case is brought before this committee. Should there be any questions about the list of professors in these proposed actions, there are representatives here from the colleges who would be happy to address them.
Thank you. So I will move the approval of policy items 1B5A through Q with an amendment to item G to change the department in the resolved paragraph to the proper department, Classical and Oriental Studies rather than History. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or questions on these early tenures? Hearing none, we'll now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The items pass. Thank you. Policy item 1B6 is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. Again, EVC Hensel.
The information contained in the report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves that were previously reported to the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Faculty are evaluated and reappointed on a systematic basis through a highly rigorous process involving local governance, as well as approval of the institution's chief academic officer and president with the goal of awarding tenure to retain superior faculty. Fellowship leave is granted to faculty to conduct research, improve their teaching, or produce creative work as part of the nationally recognized responsibilities of the professoriate. The related Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between October 22nd, 2022, and December 2022.
So I will move the approval of policy item 1B6. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. All right, so we will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, the item passes. Policy item 1B7 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard. Provost Hensel?
Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary form via an online dashboard. The new Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard makes it possible for CUNY's trustees to interact with this summary data. Using the new dashboard format, trustees are able to explore graphic representations and charts of the academic activity from the previous month and over time using various tools and filters. We're confident the trustees will find this a valuable tool to employ in learning more about our academic activity. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include the classification of 14 new general ed courses across the colleges, giving students more options to study the physical sciences, mathematics, and the humanities, 21 program actions, and four new or revised undergraduate policies.
Thank you, Wendy. So I will move the approval of policy item 1B7. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The item passes. So with no more items on the policy calendar, I will now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel to address the information item on the agenda. CUNY Online Strategy to Expand Online Programs. I think this is the meat of our meeting today. I'm looking forward to this.
Yes, the conversation. So thank you very much. As you know, we've been talking a little bit about expanding different opportunities for students to study in a completely online format, and I'd like to call to the table my colleagues Kim Siegenthaler and Bob Maruka to help answer questions. But the reason I wanted to bring this here today is because we're at the point of execution as opposed to anticipating strategy, and I wanted to show you where we are and where we anticipate going next so that as items come before this board, they do so in a context that makes sense as part of an overall larger strategy. So as you know, the thing that drives us in OAA, certainly drives all the folks sitting here, is the mission of access and being able to provide access, in particular to populations that may not have access routinely in other higher education settings. One of those populations is adult learners. We have a lot of them in the New York City area, and the truth is, it's difficult for those who are working, who have children, who are long-distance commuting from one of our campuses, and frankly, who have challenging schedules to access our education. If you look at the data, it's clear that there's a serious opportunity here to provide -- to give opportunities to this population. We've got 2.84 million people in New York City who are working-age adults across the boroughs who don't have a four-year degree or higher. In every borough but Manhattan, the number of working-age adults with a high school diploma or less outnumbers those with a bachelor's degree. I thought that statistic in particular really reflects the scope of the opportunity here and the need. And nearly 700,000 working-age New Yorkers have some college but no degree. So a critical -- and I should have asked before, does anyone want -- I've got these slides. Does anyone need an additional copy around the table? Are we good?
We just passed the amount.
Okay, great, thank you. So one critical area that addresses this need is in the completely online program area. All of the data and the information we have makes clear that this is where the demand is, and it's the unmet demand in particular. 91% of adult degree seekers plan to take an online course, and 69% plan to roll in mostly or completely online, frankly, as a necessity. Nationally, importantly, this is the one area of enrollment growth across higher education. It is a growing percentage of overall enrollment since 2012, particularly in the higher degree space. In 2020, 50% of all master's degrees were earned in online programs, and if you look at graduate enrollment growth since 2012, it's been almost driven entirely by students in partially or fully online study. So there's a lot of momentum in this space, and interestingly, obviously, a counter-trend to some of the in-person enrollment challenges that we've experienced. So what does that look like at CUNY? I think most of you know that I brought Kim Siegenthaler, who is an expert in developing these programs at both the system level and at the campus level with me from Georgia State, and since she arrived, one of the biggest challenges that we've had collectively was actually to identify what we have, because we didn't have it in any particular place that we could access it. So it's been -- it's been quite interesting even to identify that. The good news is, is we have more than we thought. We have 127 fully online programs across the 25 campuses, and that's at all the different levels: certificates, associate degrees, bachelors. What that equates to is something around 4.5% of CUNY's total program offerings. Now, that may seem significant, but we are well behind comparator institutions, significantly behind. Typically, 10 to 40% of single institutions, let alone systems, are fully online offerings. And Kim, I think you have the data for SUNY that you mentioned before. Do you want to chime in on that? I think that's really interesting.
Sure. SUNY is at the low end with approximately 10% of their programs offered fully online, but that represents a portfolio of 600-plus programs compared to our 127.
So it gives you some sense of the scale that we're talking about and how significant the need is to address this gap in programming. So it is not spread -- those 127 programs are not spread equally across our campuses or anywhere near equally. So we've got one -- 16 campuses that have one fully online program. We have six campuses that have six or more fully online programs, and then we have four that have 10 or more. Of course, SPS, that is their portfolio, and we have a few colleges who've been really making progress in this space, but it is not consistent across the system. So obviously, we have both an opportunity and a challenge here, and so we've been identifying the best way to proceed in light of all of the data. Our plan, as you know, began when, at least with my arrival, it certainly preceded me, but upon my arrival, we transferred the program, the CUNY Online, from SPS to OAA, in part because -- for a few reasons. The number-one reason in my mind is this is academic affairs. Online programs are not a side portion of what we do. It's essential and instrumental, and so it's important, if we launch a cross-campus approach to this, that it be in a cross-campus office in order to foster it. And so our first task was to identify nationally where the demand is and where are the gaps within CUNY in terms of online programs. So for example, we might have an AA course that's online at the community college level. That doesn't make much sense if we don't have the completer degree at one senior college. So in the absence of that kind of streamlined program advancement, the only option for our students who are in fully online programs is to leave the system. And so we were both interested in finding where is the market demand, where is -- and that takes into account, by the way, where there is already an online program in place, so it's in addition to what's on the ground from other competitors and how that fits in with CUNY. Do you want to add anything to that? Does that cover it all?
You did very well.
Okay. Kim is used to me talking, even though she's the expert. So from there, what we've done at the same time that we were doing that market study is really to identify the central leadership that we needed to kick this off and the expertise. This is not easy stuff. It's really complicated, and so we've been fortunate to have Kim, and Kim has been leading the effort to hire a director for CUNY Online and to bring in additional instructional staff. And finally, once we -- we now have that market study, we got that in early January or late December, and our goal now is to identify campuses that have the programs that are identified already developed for in-person delivery, right? So for those of you who are not academics at the table, explaining a little bit about how a program comes into being. Typically, faculty in a department say, we think there's -- you know, this is an area we need to move into, we have the expertise to be able to do this, or we need to hire expertise. The faculty then develop the courses. It goes through a faculty governance process. It then comes to the Office of Academic Affairs. It then goes to you, and then it goes to NICE Ed for approval. So you're talking about a very lengthy process, probably three years in most cases, and that's probably ambitious. It depends. It can go faster, but that's probably typical. Our goal was to do something different. It was to identify the demand first, the need, identify the campuses that might be interested in meeting that need because they have an in-person component of the courses already developed, and then provide resources to take those courses and build out a fully online program. So where there's only one campus that's providing it, they have been prioritized. It's completely up to them whether they participate. We're not mandating it. We are offering resources and identifying the opportunity. Where more than one campus has an in-person program for a program identified as high demand, we are having an opportunity where we're engaging in discussion to see where it fits with their mission, how successful they've been in terms of enrollment in that program, and we will go through a process where we identify the best place to begin with that program. Some online programs, to be clear, can absolutely be in more than one school. There is enough demand to meet that. At the moment, we're not quite at that point yet, though. A few things that CUNY Online is not, these are things we hear a lot around the campuses, so I wanted to fill you in on these. CUNY Online is not a separate entity. It is not offering its own set of courses. At some schools, like Purdue Global, you may have heard of something like that, that is a separate spin-off that offers the programs and has to be independently accredited in order to do that. Our job is to facilitate the campuses developing their programs through some centralized leadership, resources, and support. The goal in all of these cases is for the campuses then to have complete responsibility for these courses as they would and programs as they would any other program within their portfolio. Second, this is completely voluntary. This is not central identifying what needs to happen. It is central really partnering with the campuses to identify opportunities for enrollment growth and for demand in their space and for, you know, to actually bring to bear resources to allow these things to move to scale. And then finally, although we are staffing up CUNY Online to have some instructional designers, as I'll show you here in a minute, and in the short term, we will bridge service provision with things like student services to the extent that campuses would like us to. Ultimately, again, the idea is for each campus to have a fully operation -- operational online program just as they would if it was in-person. Have I missed anything on that? Still good? Okay. Okay. So one of the key pieces here, you saw that we've got 175 and we're quite behind, and the market is outpacing us in terms of student demand. Students vote with their feet. If we don't have what they want, they're not coming to CUNY. And these are not cannibalized programs. These are new students who cannot access what we have, and so, you know, we care deeply about that enrollment growth. So really important stuff there. So the idea is to rapidly bring these to scale with an infusion of one-time resources to move more quickly, right? Avoid the three-year cycle and hopefully move closer to a year, with the idea that each year we would bring 40 new programs online at the different campuses. Understand when we say that, you have to have a single set of courses to launch a program, right? In other words, if it's a four-year degree, I need to have the first semester, and they have -- and then a plan to build out those programs over time. So I wouldn't have to have the entire portfolio of a single program at the moment that we begin to launch it. So that's our plan. Part of the challenge is how much time it takes even with online courses, right? It's about 10 to 20 weeks per course, and we're talking about programs, remember, that's multiple courses, with the resources that we have, typically 10 per course. And importantly, there is a critical moment of marketing. Obviously, the more marketing, the better, but really at least a minimum of six months to be actively promoting courses for them to launch effectively. So as I've been explaining to many of you, when we talk about the timing of this initiative, a month's delay isn't necessarily a month's delay in terms of the ability to get it into the hands of the student. If it's at the wrong point in the academic cycle, that month's delay could result in an additional year of delay, if that makes any sense, because I won't have a sufficient amount of time to market or to get a specific number of courses developed. So give you a sense of what our capacity is at this point. So to do an online course well, we need instructional designers, faculty instructors, online academic support, and faculty development support. Critically important, these programs are not Zoom sessions. They are high-quality, highly interactive, highly engaged course development. So it's not -- it's -- what we experienced in COVID is remote education. We had to do it. We had to do it quickly. It was not best practices. What we're talking about here is something quite different. It is high-quality, high engagement, and significantly more resources to go into it. So what do we have? We've only got 16 instructional designers, FTEs, on 11 campuses. Faculty, of course, is just a matter of finding who is available and who wants to do it. We have 10 FTEs for online academic support and 10 FTEs for faculty development. In order for us to scale quickly, we continue to hire internally. We have seven instructional designers with CUNY Online, and we are now planning to hire an additional 10 on two-year contracts. Why two years? Because what we need is an infusion. Once we hit a base level of operation, we will not need that level of staffing within the central office to continue it. So just to restate, because, you know, we are moving quickly but not without thoughtfulness. And the reason for that immediacy is the immediate need for action. So obviously, if we're going to do anything with respect to the next academic year, the time is now, and so we're moving quickly to get that up and running. Student demand is at an all-time high for this type of programming. I will tell you, I spoke with several chairs today who were telling me that their in-person classes are under-enrolled and their online classes are at capacity. And so there's a disconnect here in terms of what we're offering and what is available to students and what they want. In order to sustain this, because obviously this is expensive, and we have some one-time money and strategic funds from the state, but to sustain it, we need some ongoing tuition revenue to pay for the student support services and the additional pieces that will be needed to ensure academic success. And finally, just to restate again, this is a short-term need for staffing. It's not long-term. This will be a long-term engagement, but we will hit a steady state at some point. And so it's really -- it's like being in a startup phase where there's And so it's really, it's like being in a startup phase where there's a high need for engagement that will decline. And so our, our final slide here is just to, I guess there's two more, not quite final, is to tell you, we're taking a balanced approach that's a hybrid to use everything we have internally and then to look for an outside partner for the additional infusion of resources short-term when they exceed what we have internally. Really important point, I want to stress that. We will not use an external partner unless and until we exceed internal capacity. We want to begin internally, and we're hiring 10 additional staff members at this time. As we build that internal capacity, the need for an external partner will diminish. We think that's a two-to-three-year proposition. And that certainly by year three, the plan is that it will entirely be internal and maintained without the need for additional outsourcing. For that reason, at some point, you will see us come to you with a contract proposal. We have put out an RFP for that short-term collaborator as it shows up here in the first year for 40 online programs and then 40 in the next two years as well. So I'm going to stop there. That's a lot of information for all of you. I wanted to, we have plenty of time for this to be engaged so that I can answer questions that may have arisen with the strategy. And my colleagues are here. Kim is the subject matter expert. Bob is the financial model expert, and we're all happy to answer your questions.
Henry?
Are there any existing in-person courses that can transition easily to online?
Absolutely. In fact, that is the strategy. The strategy is to begin where we've identified, let's say, for example, that there's high demand for an accounting AS degree. Our first question is, is there an in-person AS degree on a campus? Because if there is, then we don't have to create the content. We just have to transition it to a new modality. And so everything we're doing in this first stage is actually based on an existing in-person program. Once we exhaust those, we'll move to the additional opportunities that will require us to develop all new content.
And when we do that, will the in-person program remain? Or will it become just totally, so they're going to run parallel?
This is in addition to, not in lieu of. And importantly, again, it's a good thing for our in-person students because it will add to their choices on an individual course basis, right? What we're finding is most students are probably no longer totally in-person or totally online. Most are going to be somewhere in between. So this will add to the entire catalog of in, of in-person and online courses. But what it will do that we can't do at this moment is reach the adult learner who needs a completely online course of study in order to matriculate. That is a different population, and that is the point of this particular exercise.
And will the tu, will the tuition and fees for the online be the same as for the in-person courses?
Well, if you remember, you passed a proposal. Bob, you want to talk about that?
Sure. So the, the tuition for in-state students, which is the vast majority of, of our students, will be the same in-person or online. And we're projecting about 90% of our enrollment will be resident students. For the out-of-state students, the, the resolution that you passed last spring provides a 30% premium over the in-state tuition for out-of-state students, which is, which is lower than the out-of-state tuition for in-person programs.
So one piece we didn't talk about, we are doing an active marketing campaign for this and setting up our admissions structure to specifically respond to fully online students. You know, one of the things, we've got those 175 programs. We don't market them separately or effectively as a whole at the moment. So Kim is leading the effort building websites and marketing strategies. So we're really excited. Even the things that already exist, we will be able to amplify immediately in ways that we haven't done a coordinated campaign for in the past. I don't know if you want to add to that.
So a, a couple of things, going back to your first question about in-person courses and, and sort of the development plan. So not only, as Wendy said, do we have in-person classes that will be converted to online, but we also have a number of courses within these programs that were delivered remotely or have been delivered in some degree of onlineness, if you will. And so part of this work will be to take those courses and enhance the quality of them for fully online delivery. So it's not, again, creating something brand-new, but it's creating additional options and flexibility around what we already have. And so with the, the marketing, and I'm going to correct Wendy right here, because the past two times, she's mentioned the number of programs. She said 175. It's 127. So she's already grown it for the first year, which is grand.
I'm ambitious.
But we're, we're not quite that fast.
Oops.
But the goal is to really market these programs to elevate the visibility. Some have received some marketing in the past from, like SP, SPS has done some marketing. But many have never been marketed. No one has, students just had to discover that there was an option to go through a program online. And so with this more aggressive marketing campaign, we think that we will see enrollments increase just as a result of the increased visibility with this particular market.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, as you mentioned, market analysis, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate sort of hearing about the total number of New Yorkers, adults, who might be eligible. But given that we are bringing up the rear in terms of some of our competitors, do you have a sense yet, I don't know if you've had time to sort of dig deep into the market analysis, of sort of what market share you think is, is realistically feasible for us to capture, given that we're in a, what's going to be a highly competitive environment? So that's question number one. And then question number two was, you made a really great point about, in the pandemic, we had to go to remote learning, and this is a very different enterprise. And I'm thinking about this whole discussion around marketing. I think pre-pandemic, people would have understood what, online. And I think we actually have introduced some confusion, right? This permeability into the system. So how is the marketing then going to, are you thinking about a marketing strategy that really sort of clarifies and that distinction?
Sure. We certainly are. I mean, part of, part of what we're asking campuses to commit to in return for resources is quality standards. So there are industry-recognized, evidence-based quality standards for online courses. Part of that is actually a federal requirement for regular and substantive interaction. So we're requiring that these courses are built with those components. And we'll be able to highlight that in our marketing communication to make sure that people understand the difference between the remote and then the intentionally designed, high-quality online programs.
And about market share?
Market share, we are actually in the process of drafting an, an RFP to do a deeper dive into the market share and where our opportunities are there. The gap analysis that we did was really more focused on program demand than it was on the specific market share. But in fact, I was just on a call earlier today with a colleague from SUNY, and her comment was, there are 2 million people in the state of New York who lack a college degree, some college, no degree. That market is big enough for both of us. And it's also big enough for many of the other players who are stepping into this space. So one of the things that we do know about online learners, because we do see some of what we would call the major players in the online space, Southern New Hampshire, Western Governors, Arizona State, spending, in some cases, hundreds of millions of dollars in marketing to recruit students from New York. The reality is that students, even online students, even fully online students, still predominantly cho, choose to go to an institution within 50 to 75 miles of where they live. So we do have an advantage just because we're the home team, but we need to capitalize on that advantage in a way that we haven't done before.
And I just want to add, our, the price at which we can offer it is so far superior. It's, it's also a moral imperative. The, the, the results that many of these fully online providers, our students are going outside the state to get, to get these services. They're paying a higher price point, and they're getting poor results. So we really think that it's important that we be in there as well for the benefit of the students, as well as the benefit of the institution.
I guess I have a question about how this is being embraced by the campus. You know, you've, from your marketing analysis, I guess you've identified the, the area, programs that are in the highest demand, which would seem your, the low-hanging fruit, what you do first. So when you're going and finding a campus that already has courses and that kind of program, are they running to you and say, yes, thank you, this is great? And if they say, because you constantly said it was an optional thing. So if they say, we want nothing to do with it, but you've already identified it as a low-hanging fruit, what do you do there?
So it's a mixed bag. In some cases, they are running to us, celebrating, let's move. We're actually already ahead of you. We're so glad you're catching up with us. Others are saying, ah, maybe? We need to talk about it some more. And others are saying, thanks, but no thanks. And so what we've asked, the process that we're following is that we've, we've sent the invitations to the provost. We've identified the programs. We've asked the provost to talk with their faculty, their program faculty, to see what their interest is. And so in some cases, the response is, the faculty are very excited about this. And at the other end of the spectrum, the faculty say, no, this is, this is not what we want to do. And we say, thank you, and we move on.
And you'll find other, you'll then propose it at another school, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as possible, or we'll, I mean, we'll just.
Deprioritize that.
Yeah, this is a constantly evolving effort. And so we're, you know, the goal right now is certainly to work with the willing to move things forward.
And I think, to that point too, I, like I said, we're beginning this, this, this work. We're providing all this context and information for the campuses. I think like Kim said, in, in some cases, campuses have already done some of that work in there. In some other cases, maybe they have done some of the analysis and they didn't have, they didn't have the resources to launch. So they're really happy that, that we're doing that. I think once we begin to throw that first layer of programming, then there's all the conversations to be had, right? Because it, it, it would be difficult to have, I mean, I think a campus that has the expertise already in the programming, right? That's, that's the low-hanging fruit in terms of the opportunity. And, and I think campus will see that. And as we move and we continue to do this, right? Then there are other conversations to be had, right? In terms of, but again, I, I think that the, the online experience, what they're seeing in the rest of the marketplace, I think the really collaborative way in which, you know, Wendy and Kim and the team are sort of building that, I think we're in a very, in a very good, good place to, to, to move forward.
I have a two, a couple of questions, if you don't mind. For the students is to be able to have the infrastructure. We, we saw how COVID impacted many different communities in not having the ability to, to use, in that case, remote learning. Is that part of the consideration here and the data to review what the needs are of the particular students?
I think overwhelmingly, what this is, is to provide the maximum flexibility to allow students to identify what works best for them. You know, during COVID, what we had were 18, 19, 20-year-olds, and of course, older students, but that were opted involuntarily into a fully online setting, right? Because we had no option. That, that was the best that we could provide under the circumstances. Within those classes, even, we had a lot of faculty who were not trained to deliver that type of modality. And to the extent that they were trained, they were trained with adult learners in best practices because that typically who was taking these remote courses. So now it's, it's impossible to look at those results and say they are the same or, you know, different than we would experience later because now we are planning for the students who opt in voluntarily and enthusiastic about this as the, as the learning environment that's best for them. So, yeah, I, I think ultimately, no one, one modality is best for any student. It will vary depending on their age, their experience, and what their, their family circumstances are.
And is there a different understanding or process for, let's say, the community colleges versus the four-year programs or the graduate programs, if it takes on that?
Could you elaborate on, on that a bit?
That, that the, sometimes one sees perhaps in a community college level, either they are not, they require different particular needs for their time, different needs in terms of abilities for particular programs that they may see an advantage to have an online program for their particular subject matter, but may need to have a particular part of it that is handled differently in terms of the particular subjects that are there in terms of what they need.
So a, a couple of different answers to that. One, this is where the, there's the value of having professional instructional designers work with faculty. Instructional designers who really understand the best way to present the, the faculty member's content and to enable students to be successful in that environment. We're also assessing the virtual student support services. Where do we have online tutoring? Where does that need to be scaled up? What are the, where do we have academic coaches that help students navigate through some of the bureaucracy, if you will, if you will, of higher education? And so we want to, the focus is really on two things. Quality of instruction and then adequate support services. Equitable support services for our online students, equitable to what our on-ground students get. That doesn't mean it's identical, but making sure that those, those needs are met. And you know, really, the, the reality of this is that these students, particularly these adult learners, these people with complicated lives who need fully online programs, they will either get it from us or they'll go elsewhere. And so it's not, it's not our, a viable choice for us to say, well, I don't think you, whoever you are, should enroll in an online program. These are adults, and they will make choices that they believe to be in their best interest.
Well, thank you for mentioning it. I think the focus on having a virtual support service is, is something that is a key element.
Yeah. No, it's absolutely critical. Really, it requires a whole set of different kinds of, similar, related, but different. So we are definitely looking at that.
And to your point, I want to echo Wendy mentioned, you know, sort of flexibility and meeting students where they are. If I follow an example and I hear a little bit of what you're saying about a, a student who might, beginning a modality and need additional help, right? You're ready within a CUNY program. Let's say that that adult decides they will do something online because they think it's the most flexible. It doesn't quite pan out. Then it becomes easier to say, well, let's look at a comparable program that we might have either on that campus or elsewhere that might meet you, right? In terms of in-person classes and other things. If we don't have this online available, that student would have been going to another university, found that out, maybe actually totally disconnect, or maybe come to us with more debt and baggage and problems, right? So the fact that we have this added flexible resource allows us to be helpful to students that might begin in a certain way because they think it's the best for them, might face some challenges, and we'd be able to help them adapt with other things. It adds one other menu of option that we can provide the students, which I think is one. one of the things that Wendy mentioned before, so.
Thank you.
And you actually just reminded me of another tool that is going to be very helpful to our online students, going to be helpful to all of our students, but particularly to our online students. And this is Anthology Ally, which is essentially a plugin to the LMS that automatically, and I don't understand all the technology behind it, so forgive me for that, but it automatically presents course content in alternative formats so that a student can choose how to interact with a digital material in a way that best matches their particular needs. And so we're, that's been piloted over a few campuses in the previous year, and we'll be rolling that out across all campuses for the spring semester.
Henry.
As we are more and more successful with this project, and there are more and more programs and more and more campuses reaching out to adult learners, what's the role of SPS within CUNY at that point? We've, you know, SPS has covered this area. We're now spreading it around. We, you know, we no longer have the specialized need because all the campuses are doing it. What does SPS do? And I know the answer is that's up to SPS, but I'm not sure it is. I mean, it's-
No, 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 I mean, I think, A, right, there is a great expertise that SPS already has in this space, right? So we are hoping that the entire system catches up with that across the campus. That niche is not going to away from SPS, right? So one of the things is that we'll be working with them to continue to find programs that connect well with that niche, right? As we move forward, we're going to have to make decisions centrally about where do we place programs, right? I mean, that's something that in the past we used to do. It was a little bit different world when, you know, when they were in-person. So there's going to be some traffic direction that we're going to have to do centrally in terms of programs. So SPS will be part of that mixture too, right, in terms of making sure that as we assign who are the best fits in the program, in the system, to do programs online, SPS will be in the mix, and we will think about, given their current mix of programs, you know, what they can do. I also know that they've been, been in conversation with some of the community colleges to create two-plus-two programs. They already have a leg up because they have the genit component already done. So I think that there is plenty of runway for them to compete in this space. And I actually think that the other threshold that a uni like SPS that was our pioneer in that space is that there are also, right, the Western Governors model, right? That's a very different kind of a model in terms of how they design courses. It could be something, right, that is a new frontier for us, and maybe SPS could be the lead the same way that they were in this space. So I think that there's going to be ongoing space for them to be innovators and be leaders, and they already have a niche, and part of our role would be to work with them to continue to build on that niche. So I feel that they're going to have always a robust sort of offerings, right, and a uniqueness, because even though hopefully we'll get better system-wide in all of this, they will continue to be the ones that are really specialized mission-wise with this. I don't know that.
I just wanted to add, part of what I think is exciting about this is it creates new opportunities for collaboration and partnerships across the campuses. One of the things that we've been talking about is where there are small groups of faculty and small groups of demand for something that nevertheless could be a very viable degree program can be combined across campuses in an online model. Same with general education. One of the things that we've been saying to campuses, especially those that are just really starting out in this space, you don't have to build all those programs. You can partner with someone like SPS who has the full general education and create these more consortium-type of degrees across the campuses. And there seems to actually be a lot of interest in doing that. So I think it actually provides some interesting ways for SPS to continue to be a leader in this space as we move into these more new and different consortium models that are coming together.
So you said that this won't be COVID-style Zoom lectures? That's very good. And you said that it would be a more interactive model. What exactly does that look like?
It looks like a lot of things. It will depend on the particular course. It will depend on the subject matter within that course. It will depend on the instructor's personal style. We're not, we're not in any way advocating for a cookie-cutter approach to this. So the instructional designer will work one-on-one with the faculty to develop the course, the learning experience that reflects their particular style, but also really emphasizes the importance of that interaction between students and between student and faculty. So there, that could look 100 or 1,000 different ways.
Thank you.
Just to follow up to that question, so the last point is a component, but I'm assuming, or perhaps I'm assuming incorrectly, that at least some of these courses will permit asynchronous learning, right? No?
No, you said asynchronous or synchronous?
Asynchronous.
Yes. The programs that we are investing in will be fully asynchronous.
To allow for the adult learner who needs that flexibility.
Maximum accessibility. Now, we're not telling campuses that they can't develop asynchronous, excuse me-
Synchronous.
Synchronous.
Right, no, I understand.
Options on their own, but where we're investing is fully asynchronous.
It should catalyze all kinds of creativity in the classroom with hybrid courses.
Yep.
I mean, we're hopeful, give or take.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I think you've given us a lot of information. Sounds like a great thing for the students and for CUNY, so thank you. So with that, do I have to have a motion to, I need a motion to, I'll-
You can move.
I'll move to, to end the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.